All right, I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance as we call our July 10th Macon County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Looks like we have a very nice attendance, a lot of fresh faces in the crowd that I haven't seen before, so I'd like to place a special welcome to you. We're going to move right along to announcements and we have our state representative with us tonight, Mr. Kevin Corbin. And I got a text from him just a few minutes ago, said he might give us just a quick little update. So Kevin, I will put you on the spot. Welcome, love having you in here.
How you doing?
We're very proud of your efforts.
It's a statute, it's a statute, when you're legislating, you have to wear a coat and tie. So when I'm in Macon County, I wear a golf shirt. So, but thank you for having me. I'll be very brief. You know, we just got through with our short session, you got home last week. A couple of highlights, the budget was at $23.9 billion with a B. Budget, I found the budget process worked the same way it works here, there's just more zeros, Lori, on the end of it. Just some local things, I'm happy to say that we got the $1.5 million additional money from Macon County Small Schools, K-12, for the two years, that's repeated in this year beginning July 1. So that's in there. Cherokee County lost the small schools funding. If you're small school funding, I know that didn't affect you guys, but they're our neighborhood, you didn't know this, 3,200 is a cutoff for small school budget, and they went 3,240. So I asked if we could get an exception for that, and the answer was no. And I said, can we, is there anything else we could do? They said, no, it's the state law. Then it's 3,200. And I said, well, who sets the state law? And they said, the legislature. So we changed the law to 3,300. And so, and it didn't affect any county but Cherokee County, they're now getting $1.548 million for small schools money. So they're happy with that.
Good job.
Mark Johnson was very helpful to Senator Davis and myself, we got them $10.2 million for some instruction over there. As you know, they're struggling with budget funds a lot more than a lot of other counties, so we're happy with that. Got some renovation money for building for Graham County. Probably the biggest thing, the largest single allocation for capital in the state of North Carolina this year was $33 million for Western Carolina University. And Representative Clampett and myself lobbied hard for that, so we got $33 million for Western Carolina, and they're happy with that. And I won't go through everything else, you know, we got the teacher raises and increased public school funding by about $700 million. And school safety, I was co-sponsor on those bills, we got a lot done there. So I'll stop there, if you guys got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Appreciate you guys in. I've talked about all of you during the year, and Carl and Ronnie's been down to see us, and we'd like to invite the rest of you to come whenever. So, any questions?
Thank you, Kevin, very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
For those of y'all that do not know, Representative Corbin used to maintain this chair before I took over the gavel. So I learned a lot from him, and I love to remind Representative Corbin all the time that his primary duty in Raleigh is to remind the people over there that the state doesn't stop at Asheville. North Carolina just starts west of Asheville. And he obviously does a very good job of that, so we're proud of him. Yeah, absolutely. Any further announcements?
Nope.
Anybody? Good deal. Full all rise, we'll observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask Commissioner Shields to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've been inundated with public hearings at past several meetings, but we're actually blessed with a no public hearing tonight, so that's a good thing. Public comment period. Can we have our sheet? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have Mr. Hal Jacobs. Welcome, Mr. Jacobs.
Glad to be here. I want to thank you all for letting me, giving me time to speak for just a minute. What I'd like to speak about is still about the amount of the tax dollars that's coming from Nantahala and what's being spent over there. And I'm pleased to see down here at the bottom, it says, "Review of Duke Energy Leaks for Nantahala Recreation Park, Commissioner Pigman and County Attorney." Hopefully that we could get something rolling on those new buildings, and it'd be great if we could get Ronnie Bill behind it, because he seems to be getting everything done in Franklin every time I open the paper, his picture's in there. He's doing a good job for this side, but we need some money spent on that side of the map. And we'd love to have a new community building and a library. That's all we ask for. It's not much, it's a little bit. And like I've said here before, the old man in Nantahala says, Hal, you're wasting your time going before those men are going to spend anything in Nantahala. Guys, you got to. I mean, there's just too much money coming over here from over there. And y'all know it very well. And we just need, we'd just like to have a new building, $300,000 or half a million, wherever you go. I mean, there's stuff being built up here all the time, every time you pick up the paper, you see how money's been spent over here. It's not in Nantahala, it's simple. Our dumpster over there, right below the schoolhouse, I think Paul might have talked to Chris about it, I don't know where Chris is at, but I watch his painting, he's painting too much. We got two little ropes hanging over there, right outside the building, to keep somebody from falling off in the hole. The rails ain't have to cuss. If a kid gets out over there, you could ask the county attorney, if he runs through that rail, no mid-rail, and gets hurt, what's it going to cost? The boards are turned up over there with the old women walked, they're 80 years old, one little trip and they're broke off pieces. That was addressed, Paul addressed this one, two months ago. I read in the paper where up at Highlands they had a little incident up there and they shut it down, but man, look how fast it got fixed. Why can't we get that in Nantahala, guys? Doesn't it make you feel bad at all? Nothing's getting done over there? See Mike checking his head, I don't know if he's saying no, it don't make him feel bad. We need some money spent over there, we need some things done before somebody gets hurt. It's just a shame. You know, the Bible says, be angry and sin not. I'm angry and I'm trying not to sin. Just look around and just look at us. It's a shame. Y'all all come over and look. Y'all in Franklin, come over and look. We don't know where it is.
Nantahala.
No, that's far away.
That's amazing, there you go. Come over and look around.
GPS.
Come over and look, just come over and look. I know you, older people up here, you've got a new seniorship and building and all this and that.
No, we've got hardly any.
Oh, you've got? Well, we'll get there, okay, good luck. But folks, no kidding, I'm not trying to be nasty, I just want, I just want just to be fair with Nantahala. Just be fair. And it's probably my last time here, I'm just going to wait and see. Y'all know the situation. And Chris had better get over and get some rail up at that dumpster, someone's going to get hurt. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, thanks, Mr. Jacobs. Norrell?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask for an exception, I'd like to speak from here, because what I have to say really affects everybody.
Come on up, please. Yeah, sorry. You can turn around, but we need you to speak into the microphone, if you don't mind.
Up there?
Yes, please, thank you.
As you know, last time I was here, I asked about the Greenway and a special trip to Raleigh.
Okay.
I called today to see if I could talk to one of you to see the progress without having to show up, because I knew it was going to be very well attended, and I didn't want to take up a seat needlessly. I could not get through to three of you because it was a home number, and the fourth person I called in the office said, "We will give him the message," but he never got back to me. I urge you to give us a list with your cellphone, so we can reach you. It is your responsibility to respond to us. So we would like to be able to reach you when we call, not just get a message. The very important thing is that trip to Raleigh to see the World War I exhibit at the North Carolina Museum of History. And with Representative Corbin here, I wanted him to know that this is something that, given the fact that many of us are over 50, and in cases like me, over 70, it's too hard to drive to Raleigh. We really need a sponsored county trip, probably to drive there, spend the night, see the museum, and come back later that day. So it'd be less than maybe 36 hours total, and spending one night, which would involve some sort of room reservation. But I urge you to make this available, because there are many of us who have parents who lived through or fought in the First World War. And it would be very meaningful to see it. And the second is, will you please pave the Greenway? There are a lot of people that are out there, and we don't want to see them tripping, we want to have a smooth surface. Please let me know your progress on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Norrell. Anyone else like to address the board? All right, we'll move right along. Any changes or additions to the agenda? I have one, I'm going to be removing item under New Business 11D. We're going to move that down maybe to next month, so let's remove it tonight. Is there any other changes or additions?
Mr. Chairman?
If I could have just a moment to give you a quick update on the request from the library in regards to Wi-Fi.
Okay, let's put that under Old Business 10B. Library Wi-Fi. All right. Anyone else, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Lori?
I have Budget Moments 11 and 12, which you had a copy of of the, you can please add that with the numbers 1 through 5 on the table.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chester?
No.
Nobody else? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Reports and presentations, or requests for new facility for seniors. Welcome, everyone. So, I had, it was actually a great pleasure, I guess it was back in April, maybe early May, to come. Can you hear me okay, in the back?
Yeah.
I'll try to speak a little louder. I had the opportunity, the pleasure, back in, or end of April, early May, to come visit when Bingo was going on, and I toured the facility. And it was my first trip there, and I got a good dose of what you're dealing with right off the bat, when I had to circle the building, I think twice, to find a parking spot, and ended up getting dropped off. So I know what you've got there. And then I walked in, I was really enamored, and pleased, and not pleased. I had a lot of different emotions going on, seeing how many people were using the facility, seeing all the smiling faces, and the good activities that were happening, and then also seeing that we might not have enough space for what was happening there. So that's also a concern. So I'm happy to see all of you here, and I'd like to hear a few of you speak, and tell us your thoughts, and we're here to listen. So, anyone?
Hey, would you please speak?
Good evening, I'm Reverend Sandy, and I'm here to support the Boston Senior Center, their employees, and all their services. In 2011, I had a stroke, and it was a matter of balance and Tai Chi. These programs were extremely beneficial to my recovery. Beyond this are the social connections which we provide, caring, checking on one another, and many other contributions, resulting in lifelong friendships. There are numerous assets for the seniors, including art, ship, daycare, different types of classes, lunches, tax preparation, and trips. As for the location, it is imperative that seniors have access to something local, and that they can use Macon Transit, as many of you don't drive. We are extremely grateful for our access to the center and all of its positive attributes to our community. Thank you for taking the time and opportunity to let me speak at your board meeting, and more importantly, giving seniors a voice.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Jean Wright, and I'm 74 years old. On July 1st of 2014, my husband unexpectedly died. We had just celebrated our 50th anniversary on June the 6th. After the funeral, after everybody went home, I sat in my home and became a semi-recluse. I went to church and Sunday School, but the rest of the time, I sat in my home doing nothing. One day, a couple of the ladies from my church convinced me to go to lunch with them at the Senior Center. In September 2014, I fell in my backyard and hollered for three hours before someone heard me and called EMS. The very first call that I made was to explain why I had not been at lunch at the Senior Center. These people have become very important to me. And because I was homebound and couldn't drive, the ladies of the church, who are all older than I am, signed me up for meals on wheels. And that helped more than you can imagine, more than you can imagine. Someone came to the house every day to deliver a meal and speak to me, just for a little bit. As soon as I was well enough to drive, I went back to the center. And for a short time, I took Tai Chi. Then I learned at the Writers Group, and I joined. At the Writers Group, I learned about the possibility of a book club. And I was excited about that, and the next thing I knew, I was facilitating a book club. Then Donna Walker offered a card class, and I took it. Keep in mind, I'm meeting people around my own age. I'm making new friends and learning new things. We don't have to sit at home and slowly slink into a reclusive stud. At the Senior Center, I've met ladies, people 90-plus years old. Ms. Dorothy's 100 now. And they're vibrant, happy people. They're learning new skills at the Senior Center. They're quick to smile, and I'm beginning to believe that the 90s are the new 70s. Soon, a part-time job opened at the Senior Center, and I applied. I interviewed, and I got the job. I now plan trips once a month for the seniors to take, facilitate a class called Brain Games, and help put together the newest book of stories from the Writers Group. Now, I can look forward to a paycheck that helps me pay my bills and my taxes. Folks, senior citizens still have to pay taxes. And I don't have to worry about that. I don't have to worry about that. July 1st of this year, I celebrated my first home year at the Senior Center. You see, July 1st is now the anniversary of my new life, not the anniversary of my husband's death. Thank you.
I have one.
Okay.
I think everybody can hear me, my voice is pretty loud.
It's 96.
Yeah, I'm 96, I'll be 97 in December. What I want to say is, we need another place. We have not enough parking, you've got to get there two or three hours ahead of time to get a parking place. They're talking about this roundabout thing, I don't like that either. When they do that, they're going to move our building, and we don't have a place to go. Please find us another place, because we need it. If you were there one time and seen the seniors there eating and doing things, you would follow what I'm saying. That's all I got to say.
A lot of history right there.
Don, can you give us her name for the record, please?
Lucille Green.
Lucille Green, thank you.
Lucille Green. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be here and speak to you all this evening. I truly appreciate it. The seniors appreciate it. I have the Senior Newsletter, which will give you a better idea. This is what a typical month at the Senior Center looks like. Just so you can, I don't know if you've ever seen one, but you can look at that schedule of activities and see. And if there's anybody here that would like a copy of the, did you get one? I have pretty much about enough for everybody here. If not, it's pretty close. We can start sharing, but you can, I'll be glad to leave them here on the back desk. And if anybody would like one, you can just pick one up until they're gone. The reason that we just wanted to share tonight, I wanted some of the seniors to share their personal experiences with the Senior Center here in Franklin. People are moving to Franklin to retire. There are more people in Macon County, statistically, 60 years and older than there are 0 to 18. 28% of residents in this county are 60 and over. Ironically, this morning, I went to renew my driver's license. I met a man from Germany in the driver's license office. I got to talking to him. He's 55 years old, and he told me that he heard about Macon County while serving in Iraq. He's a computer networker. I was talking to him, and I said, "How in the world?" He said, "I was talking to one of soldiers in Iraq, heard about Western North Carolina, and had to come and see it." He's 55 years old, he was getting his driver's license this morning with me, and he said, "I'm 55, and in five years when I retire, I'm planning on moving here." They're coming, they're already here. They're coming from all over the world. We need to be ready. We currently have over 1,500 participants on our rolls. We average approximately 200 participants each day that come through the Senior Center for the different activities. I wanted to share with you, we had a couple people that, they wanted to share their thoughts and their hearts about the Senior Center, and I just wanted to, they gave me a letter, and I promised them I would share it. I moved to North Carolina in 2012 at the age of 89, to live with my daughter and husband. I also have my oldest son and his family who live five minutes from our house. My youngest daughter lives 10 minutes further up the mountain. My other two sons live in Florida. The enormity of this move left me so frightened, and lost and lonely. I had given up my independence, my home, my freedom, my families, and all the things that held a special meaning to me. My daughter took me to the Senior Center, and I signed up for the writing class, held on Mondays by Risa Boyce. Risa has the Life Story Writing Class, and her gentle ways of reaching out to the class has made us feel confident in presenting what we have written. The following have become special friends and brought back laughter and even tears into my life. Jean has the responsibility of keeping records of the writings. Sanford keeps us enthralled and laughing with the many interesting insights in his life. Martha has a way of smiling that is endearing, and I just had to capture it by doing a portrait of her. Deborah, her story about the evening in Paris and the paper dolls brought back so many memories. And she goes on and on. The thing is, these people are socializing, and we're not just socializing, we're feeding them. Of the 28% in Macon County that are seniors, 27% of them are isolated, live alone. It has been shown that social isolation is as bad for a person's health as smoking, obesity, and lack of exercise. These seniors, by getting out and socializing, it helps them to stay out of the emergency room. It's statistically shown as well, that many seniors will go to the emergency room with no problem, just for the social interaction. Now, I'm not saying that our seniors do that, but I'm saying that seniors will do that, that are isolated. We need to have a place for our seniors. We have outgrown where we are, which is a good thing, because people love to come there. It's a good thing, because we help them health-wise. We help, like Jean said, she owns a home, she pays taxes. Many of our seniors own homes and pay taxes. Currently, in 2016, 75 out of 100 counties in North Carolina, 75 out of 100 in this state, have 60 and over, more adults, 60 and over than 0 to 18. In seven years, 2025, 89 out of 100 counties in this state are going to have, this is statistics now, according to University of North Carolina Demographer, 89 out of 100 counties in the state of North Carolina will have more 60 and over than 0 to 18. I just wanted to throw out some statistics and let you know that they're coming to Western North Carolina as well. We have a beautiful place, we just want our county to be ready to serve these people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don.
Before Don sits down, his liaison to this department, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things he did not mention. If you're a volunteer, if you do anything to a senior citizen, could you please stand up? If you volunteer, if you do anything there. Let me just tell you one thing about volunteers, it's a senior citizen. Just remain standing, Jack, you can stand up that long, I know you will. So, in the year, we just finished our year, and you'll probably have to hit me with the number. In kind hours, if you translate it into money, it was $1,628,000?
It was?
$1,628,000, if you put that, the volunteer hours, into money, that's what makes the Senior Citizen Center go, compared to the salaries that the county taxpayers has to pay to what the volunteer hours are, is one thing, Don. And if you're not, of course, and we need to say a shout-out to one that's not here, is Sheila Jenkins.
Yes, sir.
Who really brought the Senior Citizen Center to where it is today.
Yes, sir.
And with a lot of help.
Thirty years.
For many, many years. And a fellow that's sitting, standing up right back there, his name's Jack Horton, who we worked hard at the old library, who we walked and said, "Oh, there's plenty of room here, I don't know what we'll do with all the extra space." Remember that conversation, Jack? So, now we see where we're at, and... And I want to bring your attention to one little picture here, and this is elder abuse. We can talk about that, but I'll tell you about the picture. It's Dorothy and me, Patrick Beckencourt, and Don. So, I'm walking beside Dorothy. We were making laps around the building, for those of you who wasn't there. And I asked Dorothy, we were on the second lap, I said, "Dorothy, do you want to sit down and rest?" She said, "No, son, just hold on to my pocketbook, it's got my car keys in it." Hundred years old. So, if you think it's not important, you just need to go more often. And the last thing I want to say, and I think is very appropriate, Ms. Chairman, if you have your calendars, if you don't have your calendars, you need to get your calendar, and write down September the 8th, beginning at 5:30 at South Macon School, there's going to be a little get-together. Don Caffort don't want me to say this, that's okay. There's going to be a little get-together for Don. And if you don't know how, what this man has been through, you need to talk to him personally. But these folks all know, sitting out in the audience, and I know, and Don, we appreciate you, we thank you for your steadfastness, for showing up from days when I know for a fact, a lot of us know for a fact, that most people would not even think about it. We appreciate you too, and we appreciate your dedication.
Appreciate y'all. Appreciate everyone. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And we'll see you on September the 8th also. All these folks will.
There's plenty here. I believe I've got enough. Our seniors have one. If you don't have one, I'll leave some on the back table. On the back table, you can pick one up as you go out. There's several here. I believe I've got enough there, Don. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone else we'd like to address the board at the Senior Services Center?
Oh, yes.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item. Let me back up before we move on. Figure out how to say this. Guess we'll probably all remember the book Alice in Wonderland. There's a little portion of that book that talks about you can't get anywhere without a plan. And I think that speaks volumes about the county right now, as we're undergoing, in the process of what we're calling our CIP Plan, which is where, Capital Improvement Plan. And I can assure each of you in this room tonight that the Senior Services Center is in our minds, and it's at the forefront of this CIP Plan as we move forward. But we're going to be discussing that over the next several months. And again, nothing, I've learned in my short time in government, nothing moves very, very fast in government. We always try and take legitimate and well-thought-out steps, but it, we hear you loud and clear, and it is on our forefront. So, we're just going to try and make a wise game plan for Macon County as we move forward. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any place where you guys are picking out, do the center? Do you have property?
We're looking. Hard. Hard. I'm not at liberty to say right now, but we are, yeah, we're discussing, we'll probably be discussing it later tonight.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
You know, we got our library at the college, and I understand there's some property the county owns behind. What would be wrong with that? Is it that Macon Transit, easy to get in and out? They can drop off other people there besides the center booth there? I mean, if you want to do any research, it'll be a library.
Good idea.
Community over there. Just a thought.
All right. Thank you. Good thought. Good thought. All right, next item, Heart for Families Leadership Seminar. Linda and Cindy, welcome.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's hang on one second. Hold on. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm waiting.
The crowd's dropping.
Ken Cavender will be speaking. He will be rolling his crown in.
I'm in a box. Almost. All right, take off. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. My name is Cindy Cavender, and I'm with the Franklin Chamber of Commerce. In January, Bruce Ferguson came to us, he's with Heart for Families Organization, and actually, Jack Horton came with him, and approached the chamber and asked if we would head up a, and coordinate a leadership seminar with Dr. Fred Toke in November. Dr. Toke is a much sought-after speaker and trainer, and has spoken in many international conferences and conventions, both in Europe and in Asia. He actually was located in Singapore and recently moved to Mobile, Alabama. He's trained several top multinational corporations such as Intel Corporation, Singapore Airlines, Apple Computers, Abbott Laboratories, and a number of international banks. In Mobile, Dr. Toke is now the Chief Operating Officer for People Care and Learning, and this is an international organization that combines training opportunities to create a systematic approach to breaking the cycle of poverty. Heart for Families is hosting Dr. Fred Toke as a speaker at several events here in Franklin in November. Two of the events are single-day events. One is on Thursday, November 8th, and it's a community leadership luncheon for community leaders, and he will be the keynote speaker, and will share a presentation on the psychology of happiness from good to great brains. And then on Sunday of that same week, he is going to be at the Performing Arts Center and is doing a faith and family gathering, and will be the speaker, speaking on marriages. And I believe his topic is good marriages to great marriages in today's society. On the Friday, in between those two events, is, Dr. Toke is going to lead a full-day seminar entitled Strategic Leadership for the 21st Century. He came, was it in March? Was it March? February, March? He was here and spoke to a group of about twenty or twenty-five leaders at the chamber, and we all were just excited about the hour we spent with him. Very insightful speaker, very interesting, and spoke on leadership at that meeting, just a brief tidbit of what he wants to do in November. This training will help current and potential leaders to build and develop their leadership skills. Local businesses will be encouraged to send folks from their leadership, their leadership team from their businesses, to learn how to lead with integrity and heart while developing a team culture within their workplace. This training will also touch on leading changes, positive environment, and developing leaders within your organization. So, we are asking that Macon County join us in this endeavor with, we are offering partnerships, a $1,000 partnership to help underwrite the costs and the promotion of this leadership training. The partnership level will include two seminar registrations, recognition during the seminar on all pre-event publicity, and then, again, at the Friday event, which is the, I mean, Thursday event, which is the Leadership Community Luncheon. The event's going to be held at the Drake Training Center on, again, November 9th, from 9:00 to 4:00. The registration fee will include folks lunch, their break, their handout material, and then there'll be a registration discount for groups. Currently, we have four businesses who have agreed to be partners, and that is Integra Bank, Tech Tone, Keller Williams, and Drake Software. So, we're asking if the county will join us in that, and if you have any questions, if I can't answer them, Jack. Do you have any questions?
I had the opportunity to attend that last one, and I would encourage anyone to attend it. It's very heartwarming and eye-opening with what we're going to have to do in the 21st Century in the leadership. So, if our partners may have to change.
Thank you.
Cindy, what you're asking for is the county to become a sponsor at a thousand dollars?
A part.
I don't think we could accept the registration fees. I don't think we could accept the registration.
No, we'll do all of that. The chamber has agreed to accept all registration. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I don't think the county could accept the registration.
Oh, as far as the two, the two, okay.
Chester's looking, but I don't think we could do that.
Yeah, I think we would probably need to understand precisely where, when we'd be going.
There's about a $10,000 budget for the day, for the actual, for Dr. Toke's fee, as well, I spoke with Bruce this afternoon, as a matter of fact, to ask him that specific question. He's in Canada right now. But he said it's about a $10,000 between the cost of, he estimated a $10,000 budget for the day, and about another $5,000 budget for the two additional days that Dr. Toke will be here. So, the, there's a registration fee for folks to attend, so there's not expected to be an abundance, you know, an excess of money left over afterwards. They're just wanting to try to cover costs, and so...
There is promotional literature.
There will be. There'll be ads in the newspaper, from what I understand. So, I can ask him what his budget is for that number.
It would be helpful if I could get a copy of that promotional literature.
What's the deadline on the money?
It comes up in November, is that right?
It's in November. Ronnie, he didn't give me a deadline, so I don't know. Do you know if there's a deadline for the partnership? Actually, maybe a deadline for partnerships, or for sales and tickets. I can find that out and get that back to you. I know we have talked about doing some radio ads for it. So, do you want me to try to get a budget, a budget for you?
Really, more than anything, I want to make sure I have a clear understanding of what the program is going to be about.
Okay.
Things that the county can find and things they can't find.
Sure. Okay.
And we just got to make sure that it fits.
Okay. I'll get that to Derek. Is that okay, just to get back to Derek? Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is State of Franklin. Let me give all of you, the remaining, the crowd's dwindling. We've had a line out of our budget the past several years called State of Franklin, and I really knew what this was, but I knew who the director was, so I just wanted to have him back in this room again, so.
That's right.
No, I'm just kidding. I really didn't know, Jack, but we sure are proud to have you back in here.
Good to see you, Jack.
It feels really weird sitting on this side of the thing. He's only one year younger than I am. I was with a dude in the neighborhood.
Jack is our retired Macon County manager, and just like I'm holding down Kevin's seat, Mr. Rollin now holds Jack's seat. Big seat filled there. He was a good one, so welcome.
It's different from his perspective, from my reading.
Yeah, we're happy to have you, Jack.
Y'all very all right. I won't be like Ronnie Bill. He was in Washington, DC one time, running for second vice president of the County Commissioners Association, and he had to go speak to the caucus of black elected officials.
That's right.
I think he was the only white person in there.
I was.
And Ronnie's a pretty good-sized fellow, so what he did when he got up there, first thing he said, "Get everybody, see me all right?" That was it. We're all getting older, and we're living longer, as you see that from our turnout tonight. And it reminded me, as a fellow and lady that we go to church with, who has a big family, has one sister who's 102 now. Two years ago, she went to get her driver's license renewed. A hundred years old.
Awesome.
And so, when she came back, her sister said, "Well, how'd you do?" She looked kind of grumbled, she said, "I got them, but they're only good for five years." People are living longer and staying more active. I've been involved with the State of Franklin Health Council for a long time in various capacities, and since nobody else would take the chairmanship, I ended up with it. Nobody will let me get out of it, but I enjoy working with them, and we work in all seven counties in Region A. And the State of Franklin was created back in the mid-sixties, and in 1969, got a charter from the state when it was formally adopted, and so we'll be celebrating 50 years this coming January 2019. And during that time, we had an executive director named Betty C. Some of you may have met her at some time. She was from Liverpool, England, had a distinctive accent. If you ever met her, you wouldn't forget her. Betty managed that organization for almost 50 years and passed away last November. And so, we had a few issues to deal with there, and then on top of that, our finance director had a couple of minor strokes and was out for a long time, and so they called on me to jump in and help out, and so I've been putting a little bit more volunteer time in than I expected to do, but it's okay. The State of Franklin provides several services, a lot of them in Swain County, that's where the main office is, and for Swain County, they provide like the Department of Aging does for Macon County, transportation services for the elderly, congress meals programs, and home-delivered meals programs, just in Swain County. And in the other seven counties, from Haywood to Cherokee, we operate a senior aides program, which is an employment program for people who are over 55 and on limited incomes. The way this program works is, if you qualify for the program, you can stay on it for up to four years, and it only pays minimum wage, which in North Carolina now is only $7.25 an hour, I believe, and you can work 20 hours a week. And what happens, and this is subsidized by a grant from the Department of Labor through a national organization called CSIL, which stands for the Senior Community Service Employment Program. The purpose of that program is to give people who are over 55 and still want to work an opportunity to get back in the workforce. And what we found out is that people to that age group want to work, and guess what? They show up. They're, you know, they're very dependable, they enjoy working, it's not because they get a lot of money, but it gives them a real sense of being able to do something on their own, and what we try to do over that time they're on the program is get them to either transition into an unsubsidized job at the agency they're serving, or another agency or another business in the county. We have quite a few here in Macon County. I think we have two participants right now that are working at the Department of Aging, and we have two more slots open for that. We've got one person who's working at the Housing Department, and we had one who was working there before, before I retired, Bobby, you may know her. She was a senior aide, and when the time came for her to go off the program, John said, "You can't let her go, we've got to have her." And so, she transitioned into another, a regular employee for a time. And then we have a couple of slots open, and Stacy Guffey's looking for some assistance at the Cowie Project. And so, those are just some of the things that we're doing here. Macon County has always been a big supporter of senior citizens programs, and this is an opportunity to do something for those people who are over the age of 55, and some of them are a lot older than that. We have one lady now who's working at the Senior Center in Swain County who just had her 100th birthday, and she's still working with the transportation program, cleaning the buses, letting people know and all. I don't know how she does it. Cuts her own grass with a lawnmower, so it's hope for us, Paul. I think if we can live that long. But these folks, they want to stay active, and it's an opportunity for them to do that, and we can do that through grant funding, and the county, like I say, has always been good as far as supporting that program, done it for many, many years. And as a matter of fact, our former congressman, Heath Schuler, his mother was a senior aide at one time in Swain County, and so that speaks well of the program. Matter of fact, this program is one of the few in North Carolina that's doing well. As a matter of fact, the people in Region B, that's Monmouth County and those other counties... I think we have two participants right now that are working at the Department of Aging, and we have two more slots open for that. We've got one person who's working at the Housing Department, and we had one who was working there before, before I retired, Bobby, you may know her. She was a senior aide, and when the time came for her to go off the program, John said, "You can't let her go. We've got to have her." And so she transitioned into another, a regular employee for a time. And then we have a couple of slots open, and Stacy Guffey's looking for some assistance at the Cowie Project. And so those are just some of the things that we're doing here. Macon County has always been a big supporter of senior citizens programs, and this is an opportunity to do something for those people who are over the age of 55, and some of them are a lot older than that. We have one lady now who's working at the Senior Center in Swain County who just had her 100th birthday, and she's still working with the transportation program, cleaning the buses, letting people know and all. I don't know how she does it. Cuts her own grass with a lawnmower. So it's hope for us, Paul. I think if we can live that long. But these folks, they want to stay active, and it's an opportunity for them to do that. And we can do that through grant funding. And the county, like I say, has always been good as far as supporting that program. Done it for many, many years. And as a matter of fact, our former congressman, Keith Schuler, his, his mother was a senior aide at one time in Swain County. And so that speaks well of the program. Matter of fact, this program is one of the few in North Carolina that's doing well. As a matter of fact, the people in Region B, that's Buncombe County and those other counties in that area, have not been able to keep their program going, and so the people from Washington DC have asked us to take on those other counties in Region B next year. So we really didn't have much of a choice, so we're going to expand some to do that. But that's a good thing. We've got a good board of directors. We've got people from every county who serves on our board. And our newest member of the board of directors for the State of Franklin is none other than Sheila Jenkins. Sheila knows as much about senior citizens and aging issues as anybody I've ever met and does a great job, so we're looking forward for her to serve with us. It's a good organization. We appreciate you including us in the budget for this year, as you have in the past. Thank you, Derek, and thank you, commissioners, for that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have concerning the program that I can't answer. I'll just say one thing, the Heart for Families program for Dr. Tobe and the Leadership Program, Gary was at the initial kickoff meeting. That's going to be a fantastic program, and it's going to be concentrating on leadership in the 21st century, because things are changing, and we've got to be able to change to deal with those issues that come up now that we had dealt with before. But he's a fascinating person, a lot of insight. I think it'll be a good opportunity, not for just folks here, but a lot of people in our county and our region who can participate, and I think we might get some leadership coming out of that organization. Thank you for considering that as well.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions?
I have a question. If you go up another B region, are you taking away from A region?
No, no. Matter of fact, we're, we really, we really, oh, we started out with Region A, which is Haywood West, and we're very comfortable with that, and we like that. At one time, they wanted us to go all the way to Lenore, and we did that for a little while and backed off. But our concentration is going to be primarily on Region A. We'll do what we can to assist those folks over in B, but you're dealing with Buncombe, Henderson, Transylvania, Madison County, and they have a lot more resources than we do. And so we will help them all we can and sort of coordinate them to get them started, and hopefully after this first year, maybe they can take it back over themselves.
Okay. Jack, can you tell me about your funding? Well, obviously get some funding from Macon County or the other county supporting you, and do you get any...
Every county, every county in the region does. Back a few years ago, Haywood County had some real budget problems, not when I was there, but long after I left. They had some budget problems, and they quit funding anything outside the county. And so I went back and talked to the interim county manager and the board of commissioners and so forth, and they're funding the program again. So they're participating, and we have quite a few slots in Haywood County as well. But all the other counties, as a matter of fact, even counties smaller than Macon are stepping up and helping to fund the program, because what you get is a person to work in a county agency or a nonprofit agency that helps that agency and keeps the county from having to hire somebody to do that, plus it keeps that program going and gives people the skill that they can market. So it's a win-win situation all the way around.
That's great to hear that all counties are supporting it. Or I presume that's your primary funding is...
Primary funding comes from a Department of Labor grant.
Great.
And it's a grant that's funded each year, depending on Congress, as they appropriate the money. And then that, that Department of Labor grant is then split up into different areas, and one of the areas that they fund is work programs for senior citizens, which is, which is what we fall under. They also have funded in the past some work programs for the Forest Service and some other organizations out there. But CSIP has been, has maintained their presence ever since the funding started some 20-plus years ago.
All right. We're going to have to call you back next year to get you back in here?
Anything I can do to help?
This lady has a question.
Totally muted is, what is the budget that we have to give them? What are we giving them?
Can you tell us?
14,000.
15,000 a year?
14 a year.
14.
It's been, it's been pretty much level for a while, so, but that's okay. That's okay. We're not asking for anything else this year. We're just trying to get by with what we got and adjust as we can. We're actually getting a cutback from the federal. And what they do sometimes when the federal budget runs short, we have to reduce the hours of our participants some in order to save that money, just like you do when you're trying to manage the county's budget. We have had, they normally work 20 hours a week. When there's a shortfall in federal funding, we have scaled them back down to as little as 12 hours a week. But we didn't drop them from the program, and now since July 1st, we're back up to 20 hours a week.
May have to get a loan from Swain County. They got...
I understand they came in some money.
They gave me a little money, so.
We started working on that when I was over there in 1976. I'm glad to see they got that worked out.
I'm glad, too.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you all.
Love seeing you here.
Good to see you.
I'm going to leave some of my business cards. Another volunteer job that I have is senior advisor to the City County Manager Association, so anything I can do to help you, my email, my home address, all that's on here. If you need any information from me or if I can do anything to help in any way, feel free to let me know.
Thank you, Jack. Good to see you.
I'm glad to see you're staying busy.
Yeah, I'm staying pretty busy.
All right. Moving on to old business, adoption of the 2019 Schedule of Values. Tax administrator, Mr. Richard Lottner. Welcome again, Richard. I think we received the 200-page novel, and we've had a public hearing, and I guess we're ready to hopefully approve tonight.
You've seen it for two months now. You officially have to vote on the plan. You talked about the plan era. This is the plan book, and we have to have one to finish the project out. So we need a motion from the board to adopt the proposed schedule.
We get a motion?
Make a motion. We adopt it as per sentence.
Second, Mr. Chester's motion. Second from Commissioner Beal. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would like to add on the chamber and what Mr. Horton said, Dr. Tobe, about 25 of us attended that seminar back in February, March, and it's, and I've attended seminars from loads of companies to every state. And he is by far one of the best you'll ever get. And I would recommend, if there's any young supervisors in the county, and I know there's some retirements coming, and at that place, that would be probably the cheapest place you could send somebody for training on how to deal with people and recognize the needs of people. And it's right here in our backyard. So he is extremely good.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. All right. Item 10B, library Wi-Fi.
I'm sure you gentlemen remember, library made a request for Wi-Fi upgrade. Chairman Tate met with Ms. Wallace and Mr. Tindall, who is the library IT person myself, in beautiful Highlands, in their library. And once, once we started talking about the proposal, it's actually a little more than what, what we thought going in. It is a public Wi-Fi upgrade, but also in that is money to upgrade the equipment that's on site in Nantahala and in Highlands. One piece of equipment provides networking for their private network. One piece of equipment is for their public Wi-Fi. So this, this proposal all wrapped together is, is equipment, Wi-Fi, and a connection to provide that public Wi-Fi. This has nothing to do with their private network. They have another carrier that is their carrier for their private network. So currently, both those facilities are getting that internet connection through a DSL circuit through Frontier. And, and they won't, they, there's a real need to upgrade that circuit to some additional speed. We are working with three different carriers at this point to try to assist us in getting that internet connection at the libraries to be used for public Wi-Fi. So I'm hopeful that at our next meeting, we will have some information in regards to those carriers, and we'll be able to take action on it. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we're at with that.
All right. Not just sitting on our hands. Commissioner Glassby? Any questions, any comments?
Just Karen, you know, you had a community meeting in Nantahala at the library. Are you getting your thoughts together on the library and the age addressing what Al Jacob said earlier? Because someday, we're going to talk about this, this capital approval plan.
I was a little bit late getting to the meeting, so I did not hear the...
Oh, he was just requesting some aid for the library and the community building. We're going to talk about the, hopefully, the capital approval plan here in the next few meetings, and try to get all your thoughts together.
We have been conducting focus group sessions out there to gather input.
A lot of varying opinions in Nantahala.
There are.
Just like anywhere else, so.
Yes.
We do want to address those issues in this plan, for sure.
Yes.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. Moving along. Request for, under new business, item 11A, request for support of WHO global campaign to combat ageism. Tamra?
Don't be talking about age till he gets out of here.
I do.
How old are you now, Rick?
How old?
Danny?
Yeah, he might be somewhere in there.
Danny, cool.
Yay!
Well, good evening, Commissioner. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. This is something I feel passionately about, as I know most of you do as well. And I just want to start out by saying, and I hope I don't offend anybody, I mean, I'd probably say something that might ruffle a few feathers here, because we are talking about ageism. And that's what I hope to, to give you a better insight on this evening, and how we can move forward, and as you're looking at your capital improvements, become really a pioneer, right, in making Macon County and the city I live in Franklin, really, an age-friendly city. That is the wave of the future. And that also opens something else I'm going to touch on, which is the Blue Zones. I don't know if you've ever heard about those, but those are age-friendly places where people live for, they have longevity, and a lot of research on why that is. And in order to do that, you have to have a certain focus, and the focus is a bit different, I think, than what you're looking at right now. And I was really motivated to speak tonight, not so much because you're building a new senior center or, you know, planning other services in the community, but after I attended an event at the Senior Center on elder abuse. And that was just recently. And Commissioner Beal gave a very passionate speech, and he's very dedicated to helping seniors, and very passionate about that. And at this particular event, there was a discussion and a focus on financial abuse of elders. Well, I am a licensed clinical social worker, and if you know anything about the field of social work, we are experts on these issues because we're mandated reporters. So I am also a trained clinician in the field of psychiatry. So I speak with that experience behind me, that experience, training, and education. You could consider me an expert witness. So when I heard Commissioner Beal, and I don't think he meant anything by this, but this is an example of how, how, how we're not really aware when we're being ageist. When I heard him say, "Our seniors need to be protected," that was a red flag, and I said, "I need to do something to address this." So my tendency is to do research, to go and try to find, you know, research on ageism, research on senior services, you know, the whole gamut, which I'm going to present to you tonight. But the most important thing to realize that is that ageism is a civil rights violation, just like racism and sexism. There are federal laws that prohibit ageism and age discrimination in housing and in employment, for example. So these are very serious issues, and this is why I wanted to bring it to your attention, because you represent people, the people of Macon County. You are government officials, and you are responsible for knowing this information. And again, this is something that we haven't really focused that much on, age discrimination and ageism. But as the population is aging, it's becoming an issue, and there's a reason for that. And if you just saw today's news, the U.S. Supreme Court is set to hear an age discrimination case from Arizona. So we're going to hear more and more about this, I believe, coming up in the courts. And I'm anxious to hear what the Supreme Court says about this case involving the termination of two, of the two oldest people from a positions with, I think, a fire, fire... I don't have all the details. That's not my purpose tonight. Okay, the term "ageism" was coined in 1969, two years after the Federal Discrimination and Employment Act. The boldest forms of ageism include addressing older people in elder speak, using a high voice, or, you know, loud tones, or talking to people like they're deaf, or speaking in simplified manner, using a simplified vocabulary, and especially adhering to the ideology of decline. That you're, you're aging, you're, you're declining, your mental capacities are diminishing. But we've heard tonight that several people are still driving. My relatives are still driving well into their 90s. They still have legal driver's licenses. So in, in fact, only 10% of Americans 85 or older live in nursing homes. 50% of those living at home in this age cohort do not have caregivers. In other words, they're able to live independently on their own. For the most part, these elders are cognitively robust. That means their mental capacities are intact, they're sexually active, and they enjoy better mental health than the young or middle-aged. Now, how many of you knew that? So this is something you might be interested in, too. George H.W. Bush celebrated his 90th birthday doing, guess what? Skydiving. The truth is, heart disease, cancer, chronic respiratory disease, accidents, especially accidents, stroke, diabetes, influenza, pneumonia, kidney disease, together account for 96% of all deaths in the United States. Alzheimer's disease is like 4%. That's four, you know, out of 100. So all of these other areas are very significant problems that cost billions and billions of dollars a year, to, in healthcare costs, lost employment hours, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so the obesity rate in America is 30%. And we now know this, that Alzheimer's disease is linked to obesity in middle age. But instead of focusing on lowering the rate of obesity, you would have us spend money on the consequences of that. So instead of preventing things, we're waiting until we have full-blown problems and then spending even more money in dealing with those. Further, the risk of Alzheimer's disease and dementia are decreasing due to improvements in treatment and its causes, that, that being the treatment of obesity and cardiovascular disease. Yet you would have us support spending for a tsunami of elders moving into Macon County. This is, you know, it's irresponsible to be supporting spending for senior services, and I'll tell you why I think that is. If you're trying to draw down Medicaid dollars by billing for unneeded services, that could be considered public corruption. The World Health Organization defines ageism as the stereotyping prejudice and discrimination towards people on the basis of age. Ageism cuts across the life course and stems from the perception that person might be too old or too young to do something. Ageism is highly prevalent, however. Unlike other forms of discrimination, including sexism and ageism, it is socially acceptable and usually goes unchallenged because it's largely implicit and of a subconscious nature. and usually goes unchallenged because it's largely implicit and of a subconscious nature. That's why when I heard that comment, I was like, whoa, wait a minute. This is an opportunity to really bring awareness to this issue. Children as young as four years of age are aware of cultural age stereotypes. These stereotypes focus predominantly on the negative aspects of aging, with older adults typecast as inevitably in decline physically and mentally, and that they're inevitably going into a period of dependency. Language and media, including film, television, popular music, print, and social media, most often echo and reinforce these stereotypes because ageist depictions tend to be the norm. Perceived discrimination, whether based on race, gender, or age, has negative health outcomes. If I perceive I'm being discriminated against, I am going to have a negative health outcome. Ageism has shown to have a significant impact on our participation in society, health, and longevity. For example, evidence shows that those who hold negative attitudes on aging have slower recovery from disability, live on average 7.5 years less than those who hold positive attitudes and are less likely to be socially integrated. Socially integrated, not socially segregated. Ageism imposes barriers to the development of good policies on aging and health as it influences the way problems are framed. Okay? We need segregated programs for seniors instead of integrated programs for seniors. The questions that are asked and the solutions that are offered, as we've heard tonight, are framed by this. In this context, age is often understood as sufficient justification for treating people unequally and limiting their opportunities for meaningful contribution. It takes away their purpose and their perception of their own value. So the World Health Organization is involved in a collective concerted coordinated global action to tackle ageism, and this is what I'm asking you to be, get on board with. And it's very precise and very detailed, and most importantly, it's evidence-based, it's research-based, okay? It's not just based on our perception or our thoughts of what could be or should be or wishful thinking. And by coming on board, together with everyone else involved in this, and it doesn't mean you have to actually do anything to be involved, but just support the effort, that's really what I'm asking you to do, is that together, these efforts will contribute to identifying a set of core messages that can help shift public understanding, achieving a more age-integrated society. Now, what do I mean by age-integrated society? You know, it's not just jargon. Instead of segregating seniors in senior-only housing, or corralling seniors in day programs or senior programs where they only interact with other seniors for up to 11 hours a day, age-friendly cities design their programs and their living spaces for aging in place. Now, what does that look like? Okay, this is another WHO document from the World Health Organization. Aging in place. Housing is located close to services and facilities. I think you're all doing that, that's a very good thing. Affordable services are provided to enable older people to remain at home to age in place. Older people are well-informed of the services available to them to age in place. Community integration. Housing, housing design facilities, continued integration of older people into the community, right? You're a part of the community. And you can get these documents yourself and read through everything that I'm talking about. There are also age-friendly social participation. A lot of that's taking place, having access. But this is one thing I think that's important that you're not focusing on. Range of events and activities. A wide variety of activities is available to appeal to a diverse population of older people. Okay? What's the option here?
Senior Olympics. You've heard of the Senior Olympics?
Senior, okay, please don't interrupt me.
Excuse me?
It says, "Please don't interrupt me," because then I'll lose my...
No, I'm asking you a question. Have you heard of the Senior Olympics?
I'll answer that as soon as I'm done. Okay, a wide variety, if you could please hold your questions until I'm finished, I'd appreciate it.
It's not a question, it's a comment.
It requires an answer, correct? So, please, don't take offense. A wide variety of activities is available, okay? So that would be an example, sir. All right? Not just one option, and what I hear is just from the woman who spoke tonight, who had a stroke, and God forbid that happens to any of us, and I'm glad she has a place to go with the senior program. But the fact that people, you know, especially losing a husband after 50 years of marriage, nobody wants to be in that position, and all of us have compassion for somebody like that, you know? But to think and not be aware of where to go or what to do, that's the problem. That is a problem. To not realize and to not feel that you could come and be a part of the community somewhere, that your only option is a senior center, that should give you pause. Seniors should be integrated in, the gentleman who spoke here and talked about that employment program, that is an excellent example of integrating seniors into the community, working, providing opportunities. That's what we're talking about here. Not just an activity here and there, but I'm talking about on a daily basis. Every day, you're integrated in the community. You go out there, you see children born, you see families playing together. Your families are playing together, you're playing with your families. You see, you know, I live in integrated housing. I see my neighbors. Oh, you just had a baby, right? We sit, we talk together, we know each other. I don't use the senior services. I'm in an integrated community, therefore, I am going to be healthier, I hope. I don't know, God willing. And I apologize, sir, that I didn't answer your question the way you wanted an answer, Mr. Beal, Commissioner Beal. So this is something that I'd just like you to think about and focus on, and it is, like I said, hard to really envision because we're not used to thinking this way. That's why I'm asking you to become a part of this and just, just to start to learn about it. That's the first step, just becoming more aware, okay? And I just, this is another important one, intergenerational and family interactions, encouraging that. Right? Wouldn't it be nice if you have a program, a community program, where the whole family could go together, right? It's not just for seniors, it's for everybody. Your whole darn family can show up there, your whole darn family can have lunch together. You know, your teenage child who's home for the summer and nothing to do, and you can go play chess together. You could play bingo together. I mean, there's activities for the whole family, because seniors are a repository of an invaluable wealth of experience, knowledge. It's irreplaceable, and if you want to talk about leadership for the future, wasting that resource is the biggest, you know, misuse of your positions here that I think we could ever imagine. Helping seniors become and remain a part, an active part of your government, in your departments. How many seniors get to volunteer in your programs? I don't know. No, but I'm just saying, think out of the box. This is a different, not to say that we shouldn't have those programs, but we've got to start thinking out of the box, too. So I just wanted to focus here a little bit on, we know that life expectancy has increased. If you're 65 today, the life expectancy is another 20 years. If you're 75 today, the life expectancy is another 10 years, okay? So when we look at 78.2 years life expectancy, that's not quite accurate. That includes people who've just been born, right? These are averages for people from 0 to 78. But in the cohort of people who are already 65 and already 75, they're going to live, you know, well into their 80s. So that's something to think about, too. How are we designing the city to be age-friendly? So I think that we've talked about the things that are moving naturally, doing things that, without automation so much, and that contributes to longevity, such as the woman who's 100 years old, still working and driving. She mows her own lawn, right? That's an example of that. She's doing things that contribute to her longevity, having a sense of purpose. Do I feel like I'm a part of this community? I do, thank you very much, because you've allowed me to do that. Okay, I'm not going to go into the rest of this, but I am going to say, as the gentleman said here earlier, that about 27% of the population here in Macon County is 65-plus, about another 20% is 0 to 24. That's pretty equally balanced. About 17% is 55 to 64. Okay, so we can't, but how is this spending allocated? Quite disproportionately. So despite the claim that seniors can expect declining health and exposure to manipulation, you know, by other people, and due to dementia, a large nationally representative survey found the reverse. Dementia is actually decreasing, and it has been for the past 12 years. People are remaining cognitively intact longer. So when you're making your policies and planning your programs that are based on sort of corralling seniors in segregated housing and segregated services, there's no need for it. If you're having Tai Chi and card games and bingo and a senior center, those programs should be integrated in the community according to age-friendly cities, okay? That's the plan that they're going for. You don't have to necessarily do it. You can continue to go down the road of segregation. And I'm just going to close, because I see maybe you're getting a little bit annoyed here. But, you know, ageism is a social problem that has economic consequences. And in case you, you probably do know this, that the healthcare costs now are what? I think it's like $18,000 for a person, per person, 65 years of age and older. And that is due, we're finding out, according to an Office of Inspector General report, to fraud, Medicaid fraud, and waste, and personal healthcare charges for services that are not needed. So that's something we have to keep an eye on, and we have to watch out for. Is this really a healthcare cost, or is this a recreation program? You know, what is it? It's important for you to really make sure that what you're doing conforms with the law. So ageism is a social problem. Instead of funding programs that address the most prevalent and serious causes of death and injury, one of which is accidental injury, that's very preventable, it takes the life of many, 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 many of our young people. It is the primary cause of death among young people. That's another form of ageism in the reverse, right? Not, well, it is ageism, not focusing on that. What are we doing? Because once your life is gone, it's gone. I mean, that's years and years and years of earnings and contributions and family life and children that are never going to be born, because we haven't been focusing on unintentional injuries. It's a very serious problem. Cancer, diabetes, all of these things, those really need to be a very primary focus, I believe. So when we're spending money on unnecessary programs and services, that paradoxically increases medical costs and shortens the lifespan of older adults. Adults, I think, I've already told you that, 7.5 years can be cut off your life by being exposed to ageist attitudes. We not only can change, we must change. Before the Civil Rights Movement made it unacceptable, blacks were told to sit in the back of the bus. Segregated housing, separating whites and blacks, was legal. We find these policies abhorrent today. No one would think of ever proposing such a thing. Yet the policy of segregating seniors remains acceptable. Ageism and discrimination are morally reprehensible and illegal. I'm asking the commissioners to join the Wealth Organization, World Health Organization, in Macon County, an age-friendly city. Let's see, county, in this case. Just as people at one time accepted racially, racial inequality without thinking, I know that none of you mean any harm. And I hope that my presentation this evening gives everyone a better understanding that ageism is not acceptable, and that some of the solutions that I presented, if I haven't done it fully, you can find all of this, I'd be happy to forward you the PDFs and all these reports, that this provides a way forward to a more age-friendly world for all of us. And tonight, you have the opportunity to hear from several seniors singing the praises of segregated services. This is an example of how far we have to go. Programs such as bingo, Tai Chi, games, social gatherings, book clubs, are services that in age-friendly cities are a part of the community. These activities include children's, family members interacting together, interacting as a whole units embedded in the community. It's a shame that people sit at home thinking they have no other place to go. We need to let them know they do have places to go, and we need to provide ample places for people to go. The solution of social isolation is integration, not segregation. So thank you so much, and again, I'm sorry if I caused offense to anyone, and yes, I have heard of the senior games. It's a very well-known program. I know somebody who's involved in that, and he takes great pride in participating, and he enjoys it tremendously. And thank you so much for sponsoring that program, and again, for having the senior services as well. I'm not opposed to those services. I'd just like to see more focus on total integration, and so, again, do you accept my apology, sir? Because I did need to offend you.
Finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Under New Business Item 11B, Airport Authority requests for Archaeological Services. Commissioner Gillespie, Airport Authority members, Mr. Richard Graves and Gary Schmidt, welcome.
Want to stand up here?
Sure.
We are here, Richard and myself, representing the Airport Authority to ask for 10% match to finish up the archaeological work that we did at the airport and close out that grant completely.
All right. Can we get a little history on that, Commissioner Gillespie?
The Airport Authority is in process of an additional, another project down there. And as you know, there's, has been significant, I guess would be a good way to say, findings down there. And the Authority has hired, has a contractor, I can't remember the name, do you remember? Who's doing these, these services. The Airport Authority has monies that can be used for this, but those monies require a 10% match from the county. So these are archaeological services that are required, as with all projects down there, required for the project.
And the amount?
And this finishes up the contract for the archaeological services. The amount, the match amount is $19,300. The total is $193,000.
This has been going on for years, hasn't it, Gary? What's the, what's the reason this thing laid there idle?
Well, they found, they actually found more stuff than what they had anticipated. And it's the reason why this is going on.
Which project is this?
This is the, our one extension, the first.
The extension, yeah.
And what they, the provider proposal, this is my understanding, y'all, right? Writer proposal to, for a specific scope of work. And when they started that scope of work, what they found, what far surpassed what was in that scope of work. So, and, and it's not just simple, go out there, dig it up, you know, flag it.
It's been classified as the... It's been classified as the most archaeological artifacts found in western North Carolina.
So, once they dig it up, then they have to...
They have to categorize it.
Catalog it, blah, 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 blah. There's criteria, so it's a lot more involved than what I realized. So this, hopefully, this is what we're going to need to get that project closed out and move on to the...
To the next project.
To the next project.
This is the same price that was there when he quit, when the project was completing. He proposed this seven, eight years ago. He's not went up on the price correct. This is the same, the $193 is what he quoted then, is that correct?
I think he gave an estimate in the beginning, when they finished up.
Right.
There was something a little lower than the $193. The $193 is what it is now, close to that.
It's because they've done a lot more there.
They did.
But the $193 is the last request that was made, paid sometime, some time ago.
But that was some time ago, he made that?
That has...
That's what I'm asking.
The, and, you know, the gentleman came and spoke to the Airport Authority, and he would very much like to get this closed out. He understands that there's been a time lag, and he is, he's been willing to hold his price to whatever date it was that it was issued, which has been significantly given the amount of time.
And the way I understand it, the Authority can't move forward with the other planned match until this is cleared up with the state funds and accepted, right?
Correct. And he presented a scope of services. Is that, is that something that we could, I mean...
Now, we'll finish it up.
Yeah, is that something you could share with the, with the board or...
Oh, yeah.
You know, hourly rate, I mean, you know, $193,000 is a lot of money.
He didn't actually give an hourly rate. He just gave a proposed lump sum of what it's going to cost to catalogize all that material and everything.
In his contract, he did work it on, I don't know if it was an hourly rate or a quantity rate in the beginning. And then this well exceeded what he ever imagined, imagined that he would get into, and that's why the change.
Could you share that with you, I mean?
We have that.
He completed the digging. I think it's important to note, if the board was to move forward with this, they're not going to show up and start digging. They've already dug, and I don't know if this is correct, coming up, new pits and taking the samples. And they, so they have all of that done, and that's covered over as it should be. What's left to do is take all those samples and go through and catalog them and do anything that you're supposed to do.
All the paperwork.
To submit the...
As required.
As, as required.
And it's just because of the volume?
Yes.
And out of the, and the other 90% of the money comes from the original grant?
It's not the original grant, but it's, it's another grant that the Airport Authority has access to.
Has access to?
Non-primary entitlement funds, which they get $150,000 each year. Then they ask the county for a match of 16667 to get to a total of 16667. So even though he mentioned $19,000, you can't, we can't just, we have to obligate ourselves to $33,000, $334 match for two NPE grants. You follow me? Because they'll have to take a full NPE grant and a portion of another, but when I certify match funds are available, you know, I can't just certify partial funds. I have to certify full funds, are you following me?
But in reality, true money coming back, we'll get some of that money back.
Oh, yeah. We'll get 90% of it. $150,000 of the 16667 total is grant funds.
So when everything's said and done, how much money will the county be out?
I guess about the $19,000 he said.
$19,300.
It's not quite that because of the total's $193. You can't just say $19,000. It's actually a little more because of, if you look at a $150,000 grant, you think the match is 15, but that's not the case. It's got to divide it by 0.9 or something there. But that's just the way these federal...
For the two grants.
The federal and state grants work. But like I said, to get it set up and rolling, we actually need $33,000, $334 match from the county, which will cover the 2016 NPE grant and the 2017 NPE grant. And of course, the funds they have left over from the 2017, then they would have to go to the, you know, the Division of Aviation with another project to try to spend those monies, or of course, they'll lose them. Like I said, every year, they get $150,000. It's an ongoing annual basis. But two years ago, I looked back at my records today, two years ago, y'all approved the 14 and the 15 match, you know, so. And 18's probably technically out there, I don't know, but there may be some point in the future that if they have a project to do, this just happened to come back up. Like I said, it's been kind of lingering for a few years, because TRC, the original scope of work, they did everything within their original scope, they're fully okay. But like this gentleman said, due to the amount of artifacts discovered, there needed more to finalize this project, and it hindered the airport from moving forward, which we know that we're hopefully going to get a grant in the near future.
Multi-million dollars.
Zero percent match.
With no match. With no match, yeah.
So, it's very...
A substantial match, right?
Yes.
Yeah, substantial grant, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a published plan? I'd asked a year or so ago, a published plan of the airport of 510.
Yes.
Is that available?
Yeah.
A year plan or five-year plan? I think you'd like to ask.
Well, it's actually in the DOT plan, and that what we submit to...
We get asked a lot of questions, you know, here and there.
And I know that WK Dixon is about to finalize the airport layout plan, which I think is a project that they update it every few years.
They never stop.
It's an ongoing basis.
Since I've been involved, and it's great group to be involved in, that they, they are challenged on whatever meeting with plan. Because no matter who they're getting money from, grant-wise, they require a plan. And what I think's really unique down with the airport is whenever they apply, typically it's, there's somebody at engineering level that reviews that plan.
Yeah, there's got to be an overall, I mean, you're letting it on land.
They're up to this.
Yes, they are. We do have this.
Yes. I just go, I just like, where'd you get the money? Never seen that. Maybe my fault. And since you go on our route, you know, we go.
Right.
Kills a bill, I mean.
I get your comments.
Yeah, that'd be great.
The Airport Authority had a hour or so discussion, I guess you could say, on this, and then voted unanimously to support it.
This has nothing to do with this, but just out of curiosity, what happens with them after they catalog them, identify them? Do they go to what?
Go to North Carolina Higbee. Cherokee?
Cherokee.
There's a, there's a thing, yeah.
That's what this whole plan is for.
Right. Got enough to go to the state or, I mean, so it doesn't matter in the great scheme of things, I'm just curious.
Mr. Gillespie, what would be your motion?
I would, I would make a motion if we move forward with the 10% match and just get this...
$19,300 to get four million something? Sounds like a pretty good...
$33,000.
$33,000.
$33,000. Either way, that's still a pretty good deal.
Can I ask, before we make, before we ask Lori your question, or if we, let's say that we move forward and we take the 33 out of contingency, when we actually get the grants and the money comes back around, does that money go back in contingency or go back into the general fund?
No, that match money does not come back. 16667 for the match of the $150, you don't get that back.
I know that don't come back. I'm talking about the grant money.
$150.
Yeah, I'm talking about the 33.
Mm-hmm.
And you said actually it would be somewhere around $19,300 or a little bit more. Well, the difference between the two...
That would be, the difference would be sitting in there, they have a special fund within the county's books. That would just sit in that fund until they decide what they're going to do with that balance. Because once you commit and match it, then that gives them ability to take...
So it's really 33 we're...
Yeah, 33, 334.
And he's not going to come back?
No.
Not to the county?
Not to the county.
But it was, like I said, only part of it will be used for this project, but then they have the discretion to go to Division of Aviation if they have another, you know, worthy project that meets the criteria to move forward.
So it's $33,000 out of the kitty?
Right, how, because you can't just take part.
Because you've got $150 per year, so you're actually allocating for the $150 for one year plus some of it next year, because of what Lori has to do.
That's over two years.
Yeah.
The way Lori has to do it.
It's two years worth of, okay.
It's 16 grand and a 17 grand.
So you'd have to take the 33, all of it now.
Right.
So what I believe where Commissioner Bill's getting at is, is it applies to take that much out of contingency this early in our first month of the year.
How much we put in contingency with money?
$125,000.
So if we hit it this early?
You didn't get it last year, though. You only used about $35,000 for the whole year.
First month this year.
But yeah, if you do that now, you're using the first month, so.
Would that be your recommendation?
Yeah.
I would say take it out of contingency.
Yeah.
Is that what your motion?
I'm good with that.
I see.
If everybody else is good with that, I'm good with that.
I see.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
What's the number for the minutes? 33?
33, 334 for contingency.
33.
334. And I've also prepared a capital project ordinance for each one. If you could just kind of blanket that in with your motion for the entire amount for the 2016 NPE grant for 16667, and 2017 NPE for 16667.
We'll amend your motion in a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-o, Mr. Duckery, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
All right. Item 11C, review of Duke Energy lease for Nantahala Recreation Park, Commissioner Higginson and our county attorney.
I just requested that Chester review that because if we're getting around to discussing this capital improvement plan, there are some identified needs in Nantahala that some of the carriers in and some of the communities in, that we need to get those, the community building part, if they want to utilize, they don't want to go out and have to buy land, they've got, we've got that leased land over there, we just, and the suggestion from the community is to put the, have a community building at the rec park, which makes good sense. They want to tag the library along with, but there's some issues with that that might not be the best thing. I just requested that Chester review the lease, so that when we do get the discussion and atomizing and prioritizing, if, if they have already been done, but I thought we were going to do that in public or as a group. I just want to have Nantahala represented and the library and the community building. So that was the purpose of having Chester, and I appreciate you doing that. Duke got the contact number, and at some point, we need to, if we, when we do this CIP discussion, and if we agree that their, that community building is a good investment in Nantahala, which I absolutely believe it would be, is that we need to go to the next step of contacting Duke to see if that's an item, if that may be used for that application.
There's certain, I mean, as you know, I sent to you a memo maybe two or three weeks ago, I don't know if we contacted any, that isolated what the county could and could not do on that property, pursuant to the terms of the lease. It's a, off the top of my head, it's a long-term lease, but it's still got a number of years left on it. I think as you start thinking about projects that you might want to do, obviously, you need to consult those notes to see whether or not that project is something that would be allowed by the terms of the lease, whether it might be in sort of a gray area to where you could go and talk to Duke, and if Duke sees it as consistent with the original purpose, they could consent. The bottom line is, is even though the lease specifies what it can and can't be used for, we can always go to Duke Energy and say, hey, we've got another thing that we'd like for you to consider allowing us to do there, and if there's requisite consent from them, the lease, of course, could be amended. There's also, there's also, I guess, a question, the primary focus of that lease is recreation, and then, so the question becomes, what is the definition of recreation? And you can give that a very broad definition that the state of North Carolina has, and it's general statutes. You can give it a more narrow definition that, you know, something more, which you might see in a dictionary definition. But the bottom line is, is Duke Energy has always been very helpful and supportive of our community. If we've got something that this board believes that they worthy and worthwhile of investment, I think they would give the county a fair view.
I agree.
And what is our plan to discuss?
I was just going to bring that up. I, it's up to all of us, of course, but I'm thinking that we have our August meeting, and then we, instead of adjourning that, let's recess it and maybe have a work session in the CIP sometime in August. Sound fair to everybody?
Yeah.
And we can spend four or five hours on it and hash some of it out. That work? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
We have lots of company.
We have, now that, I know that the NCAA C C Annual Conference is towards the end of August.
Got it, I hear.
I think it's the 25th through the 28th.
We can say the day?
We can figure out a day.
Yeah.
Sometime in there.
16th, we have, folks from Raleigh will be here, the secretary will be here, and the undersecretary will be here on 16th.
With this discussion that you're talking about here, could the mapping department also be involved in getting us a visual of the Nantahala Recreation Park, so you can actually see a creature in part of that?
Yeah, print out some maps of that.
And then when is the space needs study? How does that feel?
We're going to put out RFP for it. We're still getting the information together to draft the RFP to put that out for proposal.
That's got to, we've got to mail, mail that in to...
Yeah, see, that's going to, that will influence a lot of how that discussion takes shape, once the, we see the results of that space needs announcement.
How long, any idea?
We expect to have the RFP done and out by the middle of September, the request for proposals, and then when we get that back, they'll, they'll give us a timeline. We hope to be wrapping it up in time to dovetail in with budget discussions for fiscal year 1920. We hope to have that completed, so we can have that at you all's work session in January, so we'll have something to discuss along with that capital improvement plan to help us, like we said all along, as a tool to prioritize some of the needs that have been listed in it.
And is that, that needs plan carry what, I mean, is that going to apply to islands or all county built assets?
Well, and maybe that should be another focus of what, of what we talk about at that work session. Right now, we envision the county properties, all of our county buildings, mainly those that we provide services in. So if it needs to be, if that scope needs to be broadened, or that scope needs to be narrowed, then that's perhaps something that would probably be the best, best thing to discuss as we move forward with this whole process.
Yeah, the two need to go together, I think. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I bring up one other item?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dinkin brought, uh, How brought up tonight. Can we make sure that those dumpsters and the safety of those dumpsters get looked at immediately?
Yeah.
There's, there's something wrong here.
Look at them, they're dangerous.
Chris is out, though. How long will he be out? But he'll be out for a substantial amount of time, so.
But is there a vice, vice...
No, he's retired. I don't think anybody's...
Yes, we can get that handled. We can get that.
Who retired?
Chris is going to be out for a good, for be out for a while, so.
We can get that looked at and addressed immediately.
Yeah, there's some safety issues out.
Because we, it's been brought to our attention, so I think now we have a responsibility to act on it. If we choose not to act on it, I think... If we choose not to act on it, I think the liability, I'm not trying to leave the attorney, but I think we pick up the, some repercussions.
Have you ever seen it? You ever seen what he's talking about?
No, uh, I don't think so.
I have, it's, it's.
Did we go to it that day?
Yeah, we went to him. And there's safety issues in a lot of convenience centers, but.
That's what I was gonna say. It might be a good opportunity for, for someone to have the time to, to go to everyone. Because I know I've been to others that appear to have safety issues.
I think he's upgrading them.
Well, we had, yes, there is money in the fiscal year 18, 19 budget to upgrade the convenience centers with the first priority being making sure that the safety needs are addressed. That's first and foremost in that process.
I'm pretty sure he's going by the use, the use of the centers is how he's doing it.
Yeah, and he, well, he, I think first of all, if we have any pressing safety issues, regardless of the, the usage of the centers, we'll address those first. And then the, what he, what that department feels are the most crucial needs to those recycling centers, to those convenience centers will be prioritized and, and addressed.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Anything else before we move on?
I should have added this in there and I'm, I think we've done this. A few months ago, we had people who came in about the time we missed signage on what you wrote. And I talked to Ms. Bird, Becky Bird, the other day. And she said that we, we hadn't done something with the DOT. I came by to see today and Derek.
We, we voted on our part.
We've done everything.
But did we have to write something?
Has that resolution been provided to the?
Have you sent it in?
Yes, we sent the resolution to the DOT.
Yeah.
Resolution been drafted, is it opted?
Our part's done.
I don't know where else.
That's what I told her, but I, that's all I need to.
I may need to follow her up with, with Brian and all that.
A call down there might be appropriate just to see if there's anything to be.
Yeah, we've done our part.
Okay.
Easy to get hold of it, and you're, you've been trying all day.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Had to do that.
All right, moving along. Item 12, Consent Agenda. I think we've had the addition of the two budget amendments that Lori provided to us, 11 and 12. If there's anybody, anyone that would like anything pulled from the Consent Agenda for discussion, be happy to do so. Otherwise, we can enact it in a motion and pass. Anyone? Motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
A motion to approve is presented.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Bill, seconded by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. I don't think we have any appointments. I do know that there is reason for closed session.
I'm sorry. I did send a appointment for the library board and I had sent like a note and I called a couple of times. It's John Gaston's resignation from the library board and we did submit another application for appointment to the library board. So, I could ask you to consider that.
Sure.
I did bring it with me.
Can you read it to us? Yeah.
So, John Gaston has been serving on the Macon County Library Board, is moving from the area and so has submitted a letter of resignation, which I did forward to the board.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
John Gaston.
John Gaston?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're sorry to lose him. He's been a wonderful board member representing the Highlands community, but he is leaving the area. So, submitted his resignation effective June 30th. And our bylaws do indicate that we have to have two members on the Macon Library Board who are also members of the Hudson Library Board. So, we asked the Hudson Library Board in Highlands to seek a nominee for the Macon County Library Board and that is the application that I submitted for Wood Ravel is the gentleman's name, who has recently joined the Hudson Library Board. And we'd like to request that he be appointed to the Macon Library Board. And the Macon Library Board has that in that.
What do we do?
Got a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Shields. He's a good man, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Karen.
Bye, ladies.
All right. We have a, I think we have a reason for a closed session for?
You're turning 5:50.
Okay. We got a motion to go into closed session?
Some of them, Jim.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
No.
I expect no action. Media.